Sort of a weird sound.
Good evening, Camila.
Right. There's Terry. Perfect. All right. It looks like we've got everybody. So I am going to call this meeting to order at 5:00 PM. And as you guys will see on the agenda, we are going to immediately adjourn into our closed session. So for anybody joining us, we will be back from closed session shortly and then we'll resume with the agenda. So also at 5:00 PM, we're gonna call us into our closed session. So I will see all of you over on the other link in your email. So you'll see that other Zoom link. So we'll leave this meeting and we'll join over there. Okay. See you there.
All right. So I am convening us back into open session at 5:43 PM. We do have a reportable action from our closed session, namely that by unanimous vote, the board has offered and the director has accepted a 5% increase to her base compensation. And that will be retroactive to the date of her evaluation, which is November 23rd, 2020. And we are going to amend the director's contract a little bit later in the meeting to reflect that 5% increase. So thank you so much to everybody for that. And thank you to Mickey for a great job this year. All right, that brings us into the body of our regular meeting. So at this point, we'll do a roll call. Trustee Andrews.
Here.
Trustee Capel.
Here.
Trustee Cervantes.
Here.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Here.
And I'm here as well. So item 3B, approval, reordering of agenda items. Do we have any changes or requests to move anything on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt the agenda as it currently appears in your board package.
I moved you to adopt the agenda.
Okay, do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. As always, in our virtual format, we'll do a roll call vote for every, every item. So trustee Andrews.
Hi.
Trustee Capel.
Hi.
Trustee Cervantes.
Hi.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Thank you.
And I vote for me. So that's approved. Thanks so much, guys. So we've adopted the agenda. We do have some public comments, but as far as I'm aware, unless something has come in while we were in closed session, there are no public comments on non-agenda items. Is that still the case, Natalia?
Yes, you're up.
Okay, perfect. So now we move to really one of the best parts of today's meeting, which is the opportunity to swear in our three trustees who have been formally appointed and elected and then approved by all in sundry. So what we're going to do is we're going, if we were meeting in real life, we would do this in person and have everybody stand. But of course, it's, it's virtual, so we'll do the best we can. But here's what we're going to do. I am going to administer a ceremonial version of the oath of office. And then I will ask each of you by name if you agree to that. And you can respond by saying, I do. Okay. All right. So for trustee Andrews, trustee Cervantes, and trustee Wilkerson. Do you solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter? Trustee Andrews.
I do.
Trustee Cervantes.
I do.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Bravo. Well, thank you all. It's not as much fun to do that virtually, but it's still pretty cool. So welcome. I know you all have signed and had notarized your various actual legal requirements, but it's, it's nice to do it publicly as well. So that brings us now to item five, which is our consent calendar. So normally what we do is we ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. However, this month, I'm going to change that a little bit because I do have an item to remove from the
All right. So I am convening us back into open session at 5:43 PM. We do have a reportable action from our closed session, namely that by unanimous vote, the board has offered and the director has accepted a 5% increase to her base compensation. And that will be retroactive to the date of her evaluation, which is November 23rd, 2020. And we are going to amend the director's contract a little bit later in the meeting to reflect that 5% increase. So thank you so much to everybody for that. And thank you to Nikki for a great job this year. All right, that brings us into the body of our regular meeting. So at this point, we'll do a roll call. Trustee Andrews. Trustee Capel.
Here.
Trustee Cervantes.
Here.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Here.
And I'm here as well. So item 3B, approval, reordering of agenda items. Do we have any changes or requests to move anything on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt the agenda as it currently appears in your board package.
I moved you up the agenda.
Okay, do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. As always, in our virtual format, we'll do a roll call vote for every, every item. So trustee Andrews.
Hi.
Trustee Capel.
Hi.
Trustee Cervantes.
Hi.
Trustee Wilkerson. And an I vote for me. So that's approved. Thanks so much, guys. So we've adopted the agenda. We do have some public comments, but as far as I'm aware, unless something has come in while we were in closed session, there are no public comments on non-agenda items. Is that still the case, Natalia?
Yes, you're up.
Okay, perfect. So now we move to really one of the best parts of today's meeting, which is the opportunity to swear in our three trustees who have been formally appointed and elected and then approved by all in sundry. So what we're going to do is we're going, if we were meeting in real life, we would do this in, in person and have everybody stand. But of course, it's, it's virtual, so we'll do the best we can. But here's what we're going to do. I am going to administer a ceremonial version of the oath of office. And then I will ask each of you by name if you agree to that. And you can respond by saying, I do. Okay. All right, so for trustee Andrews, trustee Cervantes, and trustee Wilkerson, do you solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter? Trustee Andrews.
I do.
Trustee Cervantes.
I do.
Trustee Wilkerson. Congratulations. Bravo. Well, thank you all. It's not as much fun to do that virtually, but it's still pretty cool. So welcome. I know you all have signed and had notarized your various actual legal requirements, but it's, it's nice to do it publicly as well. So that brings us now to item five, which is our consent calendar. So normally what we do is we ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. However, this month, I'm going to change that a little bit because I do have an item to remove from the consent calendar. So we have an adjustment that needs to be made to the minutes from November 23rd. And so I will, I will ask that we remove that from the consent calendar. We missed a public comment that had been submitted for the 23rd. So we need to read that into the record and then amend the minutes to reflect that. So I'd like to pull item B from the consent calendar so that we can handle that. But absent that, I would like a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
I will.
So moved.
There we go.
Okay, so both of you said it exactly the same time. So Jason, oh wow, it is getting procedural up in here. Like it. All right, we're yield and we're table and we're doing it. All right, so Jason's, Jason's had the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Come here a second. It's perfect. All right, so at this point, usually we pause for a moment before we actually vote to approve the consent calendar to handle a few things. So we've got a number of items here within the consent calendar to address. And I open up the floor at this time to trustees for any comments, observations, or reflections on items in the consent calendar.
I'll go ahead and get started. So just wanted to kind of point out some of the stuff that stood out for me in the departmental reports. You know, ever, the ever-expanding library of things is always impressing me. So you're creating music kits for, for kids to check out with instruments is, is just sounds super fun. And then, you know, we're always, I just love that we're able through in very public ways to the board to, to recognize staff who are continuing to advance in their career. So hearing about Cindy obtaining her MLIS, congratulations to her. You know, that's, those are not, not easy things to accomplish while also working in the middle of pandemic. And then, you know, also not easy to accomplish with half the year to pandemic is 652 volunteer hours for the literacy program is, is just really, really astounding, especially, you know, also incorporating the ESL program. And it was just so heartwarming to see the picture of some of our learners voting for the first time because of their advancement in their language skills through our program. And that, that was just super incredible to see. So thank you to all the staff who've played key roles in all of that.
Thank you for that. Any other comments?
I guess I'll just say ditto because those are the same things that I was going to comment on. Congratulations to Cindy. And those two new voters was awesome. So thank you.
Terry, go ahead, please.
I have a more general comment about reports. And that is that I really, you know, it seems to bubble up more and more. I really appreciate it is the idea that the department heads are really championing what their, what their group is doing. And you see more and more information about individual achievements and training that's been going on and so on. And I think that's just a great job on the, on the part of the department leaders as well. The reports are good and you can see there's a lot going on, but they really take a moment to point out achievement. And I think that's just terrific. I know that must be, you know, cultural thing, something that's built into the way that you're doing things there. I just wanted to point that out. And the other thing I wanted to point out was Christopher's report about the, the grant that we got for the, the internet services and stuff. I looked at Khalifa, the website that was put in there that was mentioned. And at one point during the, in the packet, and I was amazed at how much money, I guess, how much attention is being paid to libraries by the state of California and others. I didn't know that was going on. When you look at that $340,000 plus thousand grant that we got that hit our grant line on our budget, it just completely blew that out of the water. We're 704% ahead of revenue plan for the budget just on that one grant. So congratulations again. I know we keep saying it to Christopher and his team for getting that really important grant. So thanks for that.
Please, go ahead, Rush.
Yes, and I would just echo the comments of my colleagues. They've said it all, the impact that the staff has in the community, the services being provided, as well as, you know, as Jason indicated, all the volunteer hours is making a true difference. And I also want to thank the staff just putting these reports together. They're time consuming, but it's nice to be able to see the fruits of the labor, but also acknowledge the, the hard work that's going in day in and day out. So I do appreciate that very much.
All right, thank you so much. So that brings us to item D in our consent calendar. And I'd ask, I think Nikki, to join us for a recognition of service.
Hey, and Christopher, if you want to get on camera too, I'd appreciate it because it is for him. So I have enjoyed this past year of working with and getting to know Christopher Kellermeyer so much. I feel honored to be the person that acknowledges his first service award with the Altadena Library District for his five busy and accomplished years of service. Christopher continually seeks the latest, greatest, and most efficient technological solutions to meet the district and the community's needs. He has updated all of our technology to make us real leaders in library tech. For instance, his recommendations for key functions in our catalog are shaping Koha users' experience everywhere because of the updates they develop directly based on his suggestions. In his exploration of new ways to reach and serve more of our community, from drone delivery to 5G, he embodies our district's value of innovation in that he doesn't limit himself in the box of what is typically done in libraries. The list of his notable accomplishments from these past five years would literally take all night to mention, but a few that I wanted to share include, via his negotiations and upgrades, he is saving the district approximately $100,000 annually into perpetuity. He participates in winning two to four grants every year. He's expanded technology offerings in the form of macOS, Linux, laptops, virtual reality, mobile hotspots, and 3D printing, to name some. He cut the district over to Office 365, and he also pushed the local server storage to the cloud. And I personally can't say enough about how great it is to have everything on the cloud and being able to access anywhere we are, and which has been especially important with working from home. He transitioned the district from a Millennium ILS to open source Koha, which is no small feat for a team of people. The fact that he did it practically, single-handedly is remarkable. He sired Jeeves, his robot son, who does a lot of work for us behind the scenes. He wanted me to mention that he drank one green tea iced latte with seven to 10 scoops of matcha powder from Starbucks for a year and a half without dying. So congratulations on that, Christopher. He oversaw the launch of our Library of Things initiative this year, and as recently mentioned, was awarded a grant for almost $350,000, with which he's in the process of upgrading our entire IT infrastructure, including moving to 10 gigabytes, Wi-Fi six, all internal wiring to 10 gigabytes, and more. So please join me in congratulating Christopher on his five years with the Altadena Library District. We are so grateful to have such an accomplished IT manager in our ranks. Thank you, Christopher.
Thank you so much. Congratulations, Christopher. I totally echo all of Nikki's sentiments. And I know I speak for all of my colleagues when I say that we are very grateful for and constantly impressed and sometimes amazed by the innovations that you bring to the district. So thank you for everything you do.
And he will be presented with his service award and card and certificate by Nicole on Wednesday. So I think he will be able to be given that as well.
Perfect. All right, thank you so much. So without further ado, let's move on to our special presentation, which I believe is from Diana this evening. Diana is going to give us an update on the Bob Lucas Memorial Branch Demonstration Garden. Lots to report there, I think. Hi, Diana.
Hi, everyone. Good evening.
Good evening.
Diana, it's good to see everyone again. And it's good to meet you, to our newest trustee, Mr. Cervantes. I know you have a packed agenda, so I'll try to be brief and touch on like the major points of our now completed demonstration garden. Natalia, do I have privilege to share?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Okay, can everyone see?
Yes.
Looks great.
Okay, so, um. See. So we pretty much started our project in July. We submitted a proposal, a project proposal to the Metropolitan Water District via Foot Hill Municipal Water District, uh, Foot Hill Municipal Water. And we were approved for funding later that month and, and at the end of July. And then in August, we prepared by removing our grass. That was a pretty arduous task, especially since we had only a few hands. And it took longer than we anticipated because there's a heat wave and there's poor air quality as a result of the Bobcat Fire. So we took a couple of weeks off there and of course, the pandemic. But our small dedicated crew did persevere. You'll see Paulina right there, Paulina Revolo. She took out her grass as well as the top right, which is our ALD staff, Gerardo Albila, and also Ricardo Lusa. Um, we pretty much completed that and, and this September and part of October, we cleaned up more of the soil. We actually dug down four inches to remove more dirt. And there's this huge pile of dirt in our parking lot still. And we actually begun to dug a trench, as you see there. Our parking lot was used for storage for all the materials that came in. There's gravel there, there, there's the urbanite and dirt and mulch. And let's see, there's Levi with the trench digger. There's Jonathan helping him dig. Again, Paulina, you'll see her in the background as well. And there's a cameo appearance by this trench digger that's a very scary and loud machine. That's pretty much a chainsaw on wheels that came and dug the impacted soil. Okay, so the really fun part was the installation of the garden. And over several weekends in October and November, we had hands-on workshops where participants volunteered with installation of the garden. Our community member and learning naturalist, Levi Brewster, led each of the workshops. It was really cool to see him in action and teach. He opened every session with a land acknowledgement, talking about the Hahamangna land and how the Tongan tribe, Tongva tribe cultivated and sort of lived on the, on the land. So it gave our volunteers a brief history lesson, as well as like he talked about the cultural uses of plants native to the area. Then he went on to the specific topics of the workshops. That top right photo is Levi in the denim shirt. He's actually having everyone take a scoop of dirt and taking a deep sniff of the dirt just to see what healthy, just to experience what healthy or not healthy dirt smells like and how the water impacts the scent of the soil, I believe, if I can recall correctly, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm sure Levi will correct me. You'll see Bridget there rolling up the hugel mound and putting water on the mulch and the cardboard. Let's see. There's more work being done. That was actually, the first picture on the left was the trench. And you see it's several layers of it. There's the trench and then there's cardboard and we have mulch and then the rocks that help form this, this trench where the water is being absorbed into the ground. Let's see. Oh, this was a really fun part. This was the second, third weekend where we started using urbanite. They're building a walkway with this recycled concrete and then also being used for a really cool bench that's nicely fits under our tree. And here, Chris is at the top right. He is using an electric chisel to carve out or chisel out the, the urbanite to fit into the bench properly. And there are a few volunteers that he's instructing how to do it. This was a pretty heavy lifting project, but it was really cool what they got to learn and do and use mortar to connect the benches and stuff. See. Here, the really, really fun part was the weekend, the two weekends that people spent planting. We got trees to plant, tons of native plants. We actually built, we had a half-day staff day of planting. The top middle image is of Bob Lucas staff. And then we have other staff from our main branch that came and participated. And it was great that Levi was able to facilitate our staff development day as well. Let's see. Here is a completed bench. And you'll see in the background is Levi watering the plants on a beautiful autumn day. And this is the completed walkway. I don't know if any of you have driven by lately, but in the evening this weekend, this past week, Jonathan and his crew dug a little more and put in the lights where that illuminates the walkway. And of course, funding and community partners, we have to thank Metropolitan and Foot Hill Municipal for the funding that they provided, Transition Pasadena, Outward Bound Adventures, Beautiful Bioswells, Audubon Center, and Amigos de la Rios. They provided native plants, trees, and expertise in terms of like consulting about the bioswale design. But, um, but more importantly, I'd also like to, let me turn my camera back on. Let me see how to do this. Oh, I'm sorry. How do I turn my camera back on? Video.
There you go.
Okay, so, um, other than our community partners, I'd really like to thank Levi Brewster and Paulina Revolo. We just really couldn't have done it without them. I mean, I'm sorry, the train is coming. I mean, and. Sorry.
Pause for train.
Thanks COVID.
So, um, Levi Brewster, he was the mastermind of this beautiful restorative design of our garden. He acted as a sage, as a teacher, as a community connector. And thank you for speaking up, Levi, because we would have been stuck doing this garden without you, and it would probably not have turned out the way it is now. And he's such a warm soul, and we thank you for all the work that you're doing, that you did and that you, and you continue to do. And also thank you for schooling us on native plants and succulents. And then Paulina Revolo, she, Paulina Revolo is probably five foot tall. She was the muscle of this project and the machines that we rented cannot compare to her. She took out the lawn. There are evenings where I would have to ask her to go home. And, um, and we thank you, Paulina. I mean, and for what you do, not just for the garden, but that for both library facilities and all that you do. I mean, it just warms our heart and we, the library, at least for, at least for me, Bob Lucas staff, we're going to do our best to really serve our community and it's a reflection of you guys. We're gonna do our best to really serve our community and it's a reflection of you guys and the work that you guys do. So, thank you. Uh, it's not as articulate as I wanted.
No, I think that was perfect, Diana. And I think you, you spoke exactly to the heart of what makes not just our district, but this project and all of the, all of the work and the heart and soul that went into it. So special. And so thank you. Certainly to Diana and to Jonathan and to everybody who planned and executed this and especially to our wonderful team of volunteers, to Paulina, to Levi, thank you so much for everything you've done. And I will say, I, I, every time I drive by, I slow down and annoy the people who are in traffic behind me because I just love seeing the beautiful new front that we have for our library. Um, and I know it's just the first sign of, of even bigger and better things to come, but what a, what a fantastic start. So thank you so much to everybody who worked so hard on this project.
I want to echo that. I drive by it every single day almost on my way home and I've really enjoyed watching the progress and it looks really beautiful right now. So thank you so much.
Here, here. All right. So that is the conclusion of our consent calendar items. Again, a reminder that we have, uh, removed item B from the consent calendar, the, uh, the minutes from the November 23rd meeting. We'll deal with those in just a second. But at this point, if I could have, uh, a roll call vote, we've had a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar, absent that one item. So now we'll go ahead and vote on that. So via roll call vote, trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Capell.
Aye.
Trustee Cervantes.
Aye.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Aye.
And that's an aye vote for me as well. So that's approved. Thank you so much. And thank you to Christopher. Thank you to Diana. Thank you to, I saw Paulina on the, on the phone for a minute, so I hope she heard some of the incredibly accurate things that were said. And Levi, if you're out there, I hope you're, I hope you hear our appreciation as well. All right. So, uh, items removed from the consent calendar. As I said, we're removing, uh, the minutes from our November 23rd meeting. I understand that we received a public comment that unfortunately was not included, um, in that, in that meeting. So what I'd like to do is go ahead and read it into the record and then ask that we have the minutes amended with a correction to reflect that comment, uh, that it, that it was not included, but it was submitted on November 23rd. Um, and we can bring those minutes back for approval um, in, in January. So the comment for the 11:23 meeting of the Board of Trustees, uh, comes from Kim Kenny and I will read it into the record now. She said, "Hi, my name is Kim Kenny. I'm a resident of Altadena and also the District One representative on the passing unified school board. I'm wondering if there's a mailing list to get on so that I can be informed of when the library board is meeting. I'm also wondering what the timeline is for deciding the project scope for the library construction and the implementation of new taxes related to the bonds before construction." Thank you, Kim Kenny. And so if we could just get these minutes amended to reflect that comment, my understanding is that it was handled as a request for information and not a public comment. So our apologies, um, for misunderstanding that. And I believe, um, we also have a public comment from Kim a little bit later on. Indeed, she said, um, via a submission for tonight's meeting, I believe I made a comment at the 11:23 meeting, but I don't see it reflected in the minutes from that meeting. So we will certainly amend those minutes to reflect the submission, if not unfortunately, the reading of that comment on the 23rd. So I would, um, ask that we bring back those minutes, uh, for, uh, approval in the, uh, in the January package. Any objection? Okay, hearing none, we will proceed. And I'll note just for the record that Ms. Kenny had a two-part comment. The second part of her comment applies to item 9D. So I will read that part of her comment when we reach that agenda item. All right, that brings us to our reports. So I believe we have Bridget with us for our Altadena Library Foundation report. Hi, Bridget. I'm gonna tell you what I tell you every month, which is that you're muted. I'm sorry, I know. There you go.
I almo- I almost said something stronger, so.
Well, it's good you are muted.
I know. First of all, I want to begin by congratulating Terry and Camila. And then I also certainly want to welcome Rushmore to, uh, the illustrious trustee board for the library, um, Altadena Library District. Um, then secondly, I just want to comment that this has been one hell of a year. Um, and I think it's important though for us to think about what a year this has been for all of us. At the same time, it's been a challenge. I think we need to celebrate that we overcame tremendous challenges, not just the foundation, but all of us working together and serving the library. But we also achieved incredible victories. Um, I, just listening to Diana talk about the Bob Lucas Library. I mean, that's just, I think, an amazing accomplishment, um, for the community, but particularly for the library and everyone involved with that. It was an amazing and interesting project that many helped with. Um, and then of course, there's the Measure Z, it was kind of a cool thing too. So we did accomplish a lot. But I also want to express gratitude to all of those in our community who gave their time, their dollars, their skills to make everything happen that happened in 2020. Even amid all of the incredible challenges that we had. We made it happen and we're in a better place than we were a year ago. Then I also want to say we're thrilled here at the end of this year to give a gift to the library from our many donors. So this gift is for Nikki. Could we, could we get Nikki on the screen?
Oh, yes.
Nikki, this gift is for you, for the library from the foundation.
Well, thank you, Bridget.
You're welcome.
An amazing check for $32,000 from the founders.
Yes.
Wow.
It was our pleasure to be able to, to come forward with that gift here at the end of the year. And then finally, we just want to wish all of you, um, well, wait. Before that, I had to put in a plug for the Library of Things. Any chance at all we could add that drone to the Library of Things? I'm just saying, it's a possibility. Uh, but we do want to wish all of you happy holidays. We want to say that to all of our community. All of those people who are the Altadena Library District. And we want to encourage each of you and everyone within Altadena community to be the peace and the joy they wish to see as we end this year and we begin a new year. Thank you one and all.
Thank you so much, Bridget.
You're so very.
Bridget.
You're welcome. You're welcome. What a team we've got. I forgot to mention, we have four people in the community who have applied to serve on the Altadena Foundation. So we're really, really excited about that.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Bridget. And to all of our, all of our friends on the foundation, thank you so much for everything you do all year. Um, and certainly our warmest holiday wishes to you all as well. And we're so, we're so grateful for your support of the library. And this year, I think more than ever, we have so deeply appreciated how the foundation has stepped up. And I believe we also have, uh, Marnie with us from the Friends. Hi, Marnie.
Hello, how are you today?
Good. Oh, it's so festive. I love it.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
So I wanted to invite everyone to our holiday event, our virtual holiday event, which will be held this Saturday at 4:00 PM. It's a book reading or a storytelling. It's a virtual holiday storytelling. You can share or listen to any of the various cultural stories. Hopefully we'll have more than one. Uh, that will be presented by members of the community. I know we do have some people who will be having a presenting a program, a bit of a play. So I'm really looking forward to that. And again, it's on the website, uh, Friends of the Altadena Library. Website, 4:00 PM this Saturday. So that's my plug for the Friends. I wanted to say, I've driven by the, uh, virtual, the garden, also the, uh, zero escape, and I think it's lovely. So I want to thank everybody who worked on that because that will really make a big difference, I think, to the way people can enjoy being at the Bob Lucas branch. Um, Victor came and joined us at our last meeting, uh, Saturday, the 7th. And, uh, our next meeting is on the calendar as well, the library's calendar. So hopefully some of you will be able to, and come and join us at that event. If not this Saturday, then we'll see you at our virtual Friends meeting, the first Saturday. Uh, this is actually the second Saturday in January because the first Saturday is right after the holiday. But, um, we're looking forward to that and, uh, hopefully we'll see you this Saturday. Thank you so much and happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you, Marnie. Happy holidays to you and to all the friends as well. All right. Thank you so much to both of our support groups. As always, we are so grateful for everything you do. That brings us to the District Director's Report, which begins on page 21 of your package. So, uh, Nikki, if you'd like to join us and could, you know, 10 out of 10 on yours and Bridget's special effects work. I think we're really. Yeah, I, we're up in the game.
Yeah, we, we rehearse.
I can tell. Yeah, it was good.
All right. So good evening trustees and members of the community watching us tonight. I hope everyone is staying safe and healthy. I also wanted to give you guys the ability to give kudos to Erin Kimbrell, who works at the Bob Lucas branch. He also got his MLIS this semester as well. That just wasn't in the package. So I'm sure you all wanted to highlight that achievement of his as well. Um, I'm also happy to share that Yvette Casilla started with us. She's our new Youth and Family Services Librarian on Tuesday, December 1st. And has met all staff either in person or virtually, since we already had some staff working at home for one week and then back in the building. As you all know from my report, uh, we had almost all staff working from home starting on last Monday, December the 7th. Uh, we were glad Yvette at least got one week in the building to do some training and meet people in person. We've been doing a virtual morning huddle each day, which allows all of us to see each other, connect and share what we're working on that day. Sadly, we won't be able to have a holiday celebration this year, but I am thankful that our staff recognition team has put together a virtual holiday gathering this Friday at 5:00 for all of our staff to come together, celebrate the holidays, as many people have taken the last two weeks of the month off. Um, so we can uh, toast each other to the holidays. I'm also happy to report that even though we are all at home, uh, we're getting a lot of work done, including building our community asset map, which we're gonna, will inform a lot of our work moving forward. Creating a new public services manual, staff training on statistics reporting, purchasing ebooks and e-audiobooks, creating a new collection development policy, and also work on a new sa- safety and security reporting system and database. So again, all of this is being done remotely. So we've discovered all kinds of things that we can be doing, even if we're not in the building. I'm really proud that we have such a productive and creative staff, as you see from the reports in the package as well. As of now, the soonest we'll be back in the building is January 4th. But management will continue to watch the COVID numbers and also, you know, and assess when it's safe to bring everyone back. Thank you to the board for your support, um, and allowing us to have people work remotely and keeping our staff safe and healthy. Cause as of this point, we still haven't had one COVID case amongst all of our staff members. So that's pretty amazing. Um, just a reminder that even though Curbside isn't available right now, we still have a ton of online resources. Your virtual library is open 24/7. This includes Cloud Library, Hoopla, Tumble Books, New York Times Online and many, many more. So check out our database and databases and all of our resources. They're all at your fingertips. And again, you can access them anytime of the day. Um, the other thing that I would like to highlight is our wonderful partnership with the Christmas Tree Lane Association. Many staff reported at our morning huddle today that they visited the lane this weekend and sat in line for like an hour to drive down. So it's been very, very popular. Although the lighting festival wasn't able to happen this past Saturday, our wonderful staff members Chloe Cavingay and Melissa Aldama worked with them, worked with the, uh, CTLA to produce 13 short videos highlighting the history of the lane and Altadena. If you haven't watched them yet, I highly recommend it. I learned an absolute ton about, uh, the lane and the community by watching those videos. And when I met with Chloe this morning, I think since she launched them on late Friday, early Saturday, they've already had over 1,600 views. And so I'm sure it's much, much more than that since this morning as well. Um, uh, Marnie already pitched it, but I also wanted to please, um, ask you to join our Friends of the Altadena Libraries for their final program of the year, this Saturday at 4:00 PM. Come to listen and share your favorite festive reading or poem. So I just want to conclude my report by thanking the board, the staff, our support groups and the community for an incredible year. Although we faced a pandemic and many other obstacles, I feel like the Altadena Library District is stronger than ever. And it's thanks to all of you and the work that we've been able to do. So happy holidays to all of you. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much, Nikki. We'll open the floor for questions, uh, from trustees. Anybody have anything? Rushmore, go ahead.
Oh, yes. Nikki, uh, thank you very much for that, uh, extensive report and I forgive this probably elementary question, but I was noticing in the numbers at the Bob Lucas, uh, library, you know, how exponentially, uh, greater the numbers are in September, October and November. Um, that's fantastic. I was kind of curious as to why, uh, the significant increase, what, what, what happened there? You know, obviously it's, it's great news, but I'm kind of curious as to, uh, what, what transpired.
It correlated more so to opening the building. So like Curbside picked up, but also, um, with us opening the building and people being able to browse. When they order books, if they're a Bob Lucas item, then the, the circulation is given to Bob Lucas. So I think it's like, it correlates with when we started letting patrons browse in person again.
Right. Thank you for that.
Only those numbers are gonna look a lot different next month with us having.
I would think so.
It's definitely a weird, it's gonna be weird statistics for probably the next couple of years.
Agreed.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. Other questions for Nikki? Okay, well, I'd just like to echo your comments, Nikki. I, um, I'm not all the way through the Christmas Tree Lane video, but I am learning a ton and it's just really well done. And I'm so thrilled to see our partnerships with, um, both Christmas Tree Lane and Historical and, and partners around town continuing. I think it's, it's tremendous. And although we couldn't be there in person to watch the lights go on for this 100th year, I think it's still a very fitting marker for what an important moment it is for Altadena. So thank you so much. Okay, that brings us to our financial reports. Uh, Nicole, do we have you with us?
I'm here.
Oh, perfect. Hi.
Um, so you're looking at the financial statements for October. This puts us at a third of our fiscal year or 33%. Um, still reflecting a negative net income, but that will be the case until we receive the December financials. Uh, that'll finally put us in the positive once all those property tax payments come in. Um, total cash with the county is about 2.4 million, still satisfying our district reserve policy. And then you see total assets there at about 4.4. Revenue highlights, as several people have already mentioned, we did receive that very exciting grant from Khalifa to install our high-speed internet. Christopher has a lot of fun metaphors for how that internet will look. Um, so even though that income line did increase. So even though that income line did increase exponentially, Christopher has assured me he intends to spend every penny. So you'll see the technology expense match that number. And then under expenditures, we did install a new sprinkler system over at the branch as part of the garden developments, and then some much-needed electrical upgrades. They were very old and outdated in both the circulation office and our Assistant Library Director's office. And then, as Nikki mentioned, we are really building up our virtual collection. So we did spend a significant amount with Biblioteca for our cloud library offerings and a progress payment for our financial audit, which happily is already completed this year. And then $3,000 to author Caitlin Doughty for a very, very successful program with our teen librarian. She interviewed that author on several of her books and asked her questions about being a mortician in LA. And if you haven't watched it, I highly recommend it. It's a lot of fun. Does anybody have any questions about the financial statements?
Any questions for Nicole? Okay. Well, thank you so much, Nicole. Really appreciate it, as always. So I think, I think we're in good shape. Okay, that brings us to our committee reports. So no committee reports in the package, but we'll just go through quickly in case there are any oral reports. Anything from the Budget Committee?
No, we will schedule a review of how things are going in the next couple of months. Within the next couple of months, I know Nikki and Nicole will keep us surprised, Katie, you and I, about when that will occur. But so far, so good. Budget looks pretty good in this particular package.
Okay, perfect. And similarly, no updates from the CVRA or Public Funding Committees. Both of those, as ad hoc committees, will automatically dissolve basically now, and we will reform any ad hoc committees for 2021 a little bit later in the agenda. But the Public Funding Committee, as you will recall, existed to oversee the process of acquiring public funding, which it's now done. So its scope has been met, and it has ceased to exist. So that's, that's the end for the Public Funding Committee. Liaison reports. Do we have any reports from our, we haven't actually reported, replaced our governmental relations liaison, so there won't be a report there, but from Jason or Terry, either of you?
I'll go again on the Friends side. Marnie already gave a pretty good overview of what's been going on, but I encourage everybody, if you haven't been to one of their readings and those events, they are a lot of fun. That'll be coming up on the 14th of December. And I just had their meeting a few days ago on Saturday. And I know the Friends is really working hard and looking for ways to engage their membership as well. And we talked a little bit about some of the cloud library and online options that we have and with zero way to connect with membership with some of the new services that we have and so on. I know they're working hard on that, so it was a very connected meeting.
Thanks. Jason, anything from you on the foundation?
No, I think Bridget gave a good report. I just, you know, since we're in our last meeting of the year, I just, I really want to thank Bridget and her leadership with the foundation this year in their amazing leadership and contribution towards the passage of Measure Z. You know, we'll be talking about more of that tonight. But, you know, the impact that's going to end up having for very far into the future and what it's going to mean for our community and for our libraries is going to be amazing. So once again, thank you for that support.
Here, here. All right. Thank you so much for that. So that brings us to item 7G, trustee reports. Does anybody have a report that they'd like to make at this point? Okay. Very good. Then we will move on to item 8A, which is our unfinished business. So as you heard, as our reportable action from closed session, we have agreed with the District Director on an adjustment in her compensation of 5% retroactive to last month's date of evaluation. And so at this time, to memorialize that in her agreement with the district, I would ask for a motion to amend the director's contract to reflect that 5% increase. So that would be reflected in Section 3.1 of her contract. So an increase of 5%, which would bring us to $1,64,850. And so we would amend the base compensation to reflect that new rate. So do I hear a motion to amend the contract to that effect?
I'll move.
Okay, I hear a motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, motion's been made in second. And any further discussion on this? It's discussed rigorously and voted on in closed session, but any, any other discussion in open session at this point? Okay, hearing none. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Terry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Good job, Nikki. That would be my, my discussion. You did a terrific job for us.
Here, here. Absolutely. All right. So if there's no further discussion on this item, we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Capel.
Aye.
Trustee Cervantes.
Aye.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Aye.
And that's an aye vote for me as well. So thank you so much, and we will amend that contract and figure out who needs to sign what, but we'll get that handled. And again, retroactive to the date of evaluation. All right, that brings us into new business, but I want to just pause here for a second. It is 6:30, so we've been going for a minute. How's everybody feeling? Do you want to keep forging boldly ahead? Do you want to take five minutes? How are we, how are we doing? Five minutes? All right.
I need five.
Let's take five. All right. So let's take five. Actually, let's, let's take a little bit more than five. Let's, let's come back at 6:34. Let's come back at 6:45, and we'll do the, we'll do the second half. Okay, so I'm going to declare a brief recess at 6:34, and we will reconvene at 6:45 and resume our agenda at that point. All right, I'll see you in just a minute. All right, if I could ask everybody to rejoin us here?
Katie, this is Jason. I keep getting a message that I can't, the host isn't allowing me to restart my video.
Okay.
There we go.
Perfect. Fabulous. All right. So we've got everybody. So here we are, convened back into open session at 6:46 PM. And now we're going to launch into the second half of our meeting. And what better place to start than with item 9A, which is our operational plan? So this begins on pages 38 and following of your package. And at this time, Nikki, I'd invite you to tell us a little bit about it and maybe talk us through it.
Perfect. So I'm very excited to share our operational plan for the calendar year 2021. The management team direct, worked directly with their employees to help identify the goals and objectives that you see on these, I believe, 17 pages. The most notable difference compared to our operational plan for 2020 is that this year, we decided as a management team to divide it up by department. So it's much more clear who's responsible for what. Obviously, there's collaboration on some of these goals between departments, but really, we wanted to make sure that the goals, it's much more easy to identify who's in charge of them, who's responsible. we wanted to make sure that the goals, it's much more easy to identify who's in charge of them, who's responsible for them, as well as including, as you can see from the plan in front of you, that you, there's more measurable outcomes. You can see that how we're evaluating it and what the evidence of success looks like. Chloe has pulled it together for us, made it beautiful for you. And we're also going to work closely with Planner, which is one of the apps within Microsoft to do a better job of tracking as well. So the plan for the 2020 plan, which I'm really proud of how much we were able to accomplish, especially considering we lived through a pandemic this year. We'll be bringing that operational plan back to you guys in January to report back on all that we accomplished. We did give you an update earlier this summer. But those are some of the highlights of the difference between last year's plan and this year's plan. And I'm happy to hear any feedback or questions or anything that about the operational plan itself.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's, let's open up the floor, but just a quick reminder for anybody who's following along at home. So of course, the library operates on a fiscal year in terms of our budget. So that is July first through June thirtieth of any given year. But our operational plan is based on the calendar year. So that, that is a little bit offset. Just in case there's any confusion, that's why we're looking at the operational plan tonight. But the annual report that you see covers the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020.
Yeah.
So.
Katie, it is a little.
It's just a little confusing. Yeah, yeah.
And the reason the operational plan is being done on the calendar year is because we didn't approve the strategic plan until December of 2019. So we didn't want to wait six months to present an operational plan to the board. So I mean, at some point, it could maybe adjust to the fiscal year, but as of this point, we're going to stick with the calendar year.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. So with that, I'd like to open up the floor to questions or feedback or comments from trustees on the district's operational plan. Terry, go ahead.
Well, I, I was struck, Nikki, with the, with the accountability that you've built into this with everybody. And category, the goals of starting on the evaluation method, evidence of success. Is that something you've used before or something that you've heard about? Because I think it, I think it looks pretty good, the format of it. Can you take us through how you made the decision to structure it that way?
Um, to be honest, I think it was a conversation that occurred between our new assistant director, Victor, and Chloe, when they talked through how they wanted to format it this year. There was confusion, we felt like, in last year's plan, like, who was assigned what? You know, and we think that's, that's confusing for the board. You know, all of us know what we're responsible for, but in her talking to Victor, Victor definitely liked SMART goals and accountability and making sure that we're able to report on those outputs. So it was their conversation that kind of drove this new format.
That's terrific. And there's a lot of points. Of course, there's a lot of data points to deal with here. But I think you did a pretty good job of formatting it so that it is really easily understandable when you're looking at it.
I have the same thought. It's really comprehensive and it's visually really lovely and easy to read. And I really like the, the level of detail that you added into the goals and how they'll be measured. And the specificity is really great. So it looks really, really lovely. It was nice to read.
Thank you. And that's always kudos to Chloe because she's the master at presenting things in a very recognizable way. I feel like all of our stuff is branded to look the same. You know, it's ours, but also like exciting, new and pretty.
And I'll just continue with one thing that I missed, I meant to talk about, and that was objective number six. Develop and grow Reed Local, Shop Local. And I see one of your, the evidence for success on one of the categories is that ten business partnerships are established. And I think that's really going to be a big item for our community in the coming months. You know, people have been hit so hard with their businesses to get some support from anybody, you know, and from us would be a terrific goal to have. So thanks for that.
Yeah. And just to point out, Victor actually launched a Reed Local, Shop Local in, I believe Carl's bad. Correct me if I'm wrong. Victor's in here if he wants to.
Scandito.
Oh, it's Scandito, sorry. So like, he's coming into this with experience doing it and some of the, the obstacles that he faced, we already learned from. So I think it's going to be a really successful way to grow our partnerships and connections to the community and enhance local business.
So Katie, I have a few comments here. Yeah, I mean, Dido, the, the overall comment so far, I mean, just really impressive how comprehensive this is. And then like Terry mentioned, the accountability that's built into. I just want to point out a couple of pieces that really stood out to me. Under the Adult Services Objective Five, just really being intentional about the engagement with patrons and just really taking advantage of each and every interaction that we have. You know, obviously, once we're able to reopen, it'll be much more effective, but just seeing us continue to be intentional about that is great. And then, you know, I, I held back bringing this up when we were recognizing Christopher, but I challenge anybody to find an IT operational plan that talks much more about what are we doing about for the community and with the community than a bunch, like, a bunch of, like, what people who don't know anything about IT would imagine would be in an IT report. And this is everything but that. And it's just, it's, it's just really, really impressive. And I, you know, wanted to just really recognize Christopher and his team in particular. You know, but like, when you see an IT report talking about, like, how are we going to work with youth and family services to expand access to technology? And then it's just really, really impressive to see, as well as obviously the whole rest of the operational plan. And for, for Altadena to be doing some of this, you know, these are things that some of the largest libraries, systems in the country kind of just dream of, right? And, and we're actually moving forward. So it's really impressive. I'm really excited to see where we go with all of this.
Yeah, me too. Rush, go ahead.
Yes, as a new kid in the block, seeing this for the first time, I was very impressed, as the other members are, as they've articulated. What I will say kind of overarching is it's great to see the metrics. It's great to see the allocation of responsibility, but really more so than anything else is that due to COVID and how you as a director of worked with your staff to respond now, not just once, but twice and three times over in this COVID-19 crisis and having to shut down and try to figure out ways to provide services. But really, this plan really reflects that this is not an organization that's just about trying to figure out how to survive during COVID, but really talking about how we can actually be part of the community in a much more organic fashion and meet needs the community. And this really sets the framework for that and establishes deliverables that I think that really will achieve what the vision was when you, when you first started with your team to put this thing down in writing. So the images look, looks good, but I say overall, just the, the overall impression that this gives is that, you know, we're not just sitting on our hands trying to figure out how to deal with what we have now, but really let's, let's focus on how we're going to come out of this in the future in a much more positive fashion. I think this document really reflects it. So kudos to you, Nikki, and your team for this great product.
Thank you.
Any other comments or feedback, questions for Nikki?
I'm going to say really quick, there's drilling in my house, so I'm going to talk fast. I'm sorry. I was trying to look through the, the specifics that I wanted to highlight. And I just will say that I really like the way, again, going back to how it's laid out with the different, I guess, kind of vision pieces, like we are connectors, we are curious, and we're neighbors. I really, really love that. I thought that was really fabulous. And I, like, was, like, highlighting and starring all of the pieces that were really kind of personally relevant to me and that I connected with personally in the We Are Neighbors section. So I thought it was really like the goals, the objectives and the goals there that are laid out are really kind of innovative and forward thinking. And I just, again, you know, given props. It is really, really lovely.
Thank you. We're, we're not looking at the pandemic and everything that's come out of it as challenges, but rather opportunities. That's how we're trying to frame it all.
Yeah. I think that's definitely reflected here. Well, I'll certainly echo everything I have, you know, heard my colleagues say, and I think, you know, just nothing but appreciation for the thoughtfulness and thoroughness from each department. Certainly, we have a level of detail here that's really inspiring. Couple of things I wanted to just flag or, you know, kind of bring up. You know, when we started the strategic planning process back in, like, twenty eighteen slash nineteen, there was a concern that came up multiple times from multiple angles, which is exactly right. And everybody said, you know, what's really the point of a strategic plan? Like, why do we even really need one? Seems like a waste of time and money. And the response that we had internally was, well, we want to create something that's a living document that really actually does guide decision-making and prioritization and you know, everything from budgets to staffing to, you know, time allocation. And I'm just so happy to see that in such a tangible form. It's really gratifying to see those core values that we spent so much time thinking about and debating and, you know, hashing out, really driving some of these. So yay, that really happened. That's really gratifying. Couple of quick things, just Betsy's not here, so I'm going to do it. In objective number two, there's a typo, May twenty twenty one, there's an extra zero there. Who cares? But just an observation. I, I noticed, you know, in some of the objectives around local business and partnerships with nonprofits, just sort of the absence of some of our public agency partners. And I don't think that that's reflective of actually what we've been doing. I think we do engage with, with various public agency partners all the time. But I think that there's also merit in being explicit about that. And so I wonder if it makes sense in the, in the way that we say explicitly, we're going to build partnerships with nonprofits around sustainability with businesses around these specific goals. If maybe there is some place to acknowledge the role of public agencies and everything from, you know, our school district to our community college district to small business administration and others, I'm thinking about, you know, potentially other social services or healthcare services, because what we've, what we've sort of said all along is the Altadena Library is not necessarily in the business of providing those services, but we do want to connect people to them. And so, again, I am, I am sure that that is actually in process. And I know from conversation that those partnerships are ongoing, but I do think that there might be merit in acknowledging it explicitly in the way that some of those other partnerships are acknowledged.
Okay.
I'm really excited to see the, the Library of Experts being a thing. We've talked about it for a long time and you know, just like our Library of Things is, is a great asset, having a library of experts, certainly here in Altadena, and we have such an incredible wealth of expertise on everything from, as we saw, you know, sustainable gardening to literal rocket science. Such an, such an awesome thing to offer. And then the only other comment that I had was I know. Yeah, sorry. I'm just trying to make sure I get to the right place. So, you know, in, this is page, oh God, what is this? Page fifty of the packet, it's objective number five around a culture of volunteerism and fundraising. And I guess what stood out to me here was, you know, thinking about how we work with our support groups and what we do to bring volunteers in. And I just, I was, I don't have a specific policy recommendation per se, but I'm thinking in this time when, you know, the friends are asking some really important questions about what it looks like to be a volunteer on behalf of the library when we can't be in the building. That maybe there's, maybe there's an important role for our support groups to play in that conversation around creating a culture of volunteerism. And maybe there are some ways that we could, we could engage them in that process. Certainly, they are the, you know, often the, the actual volunteers. But I think, you know, if we can, if we can kind of, in the same way that we want to work with them to streamline our fundraising campaigns, maybe something around working with support groups to, to think about our volunteer recruitment and retention process. And, and making sure that, you know, again, that that aligns with the strategic goals that are being set out, because I do think it's, you know, it's a quick moving operation with a lot of pieces. And so trying to make sure that everybody's headed in the same direction would be pretty helpful.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting because when we hired Natalia, part of, like, we combined her role with volunteer coordinating. But I think she built those goals with Chloe. And she's completely built a new recruitment process, including like identifying roles, but we haven't been able to roll it out yet.
Yeah.
So it's going to be interesting to see, like, she's already made some really great changes that I think are going to benefit the, both of the support organizations, because it's like, you're almost like applying to do specific things rather than, hey, I want to volunteer for the library. And this way, we're able to connect people to the work that they want to do. But I completely agree and we'll, we'll have them in the conversation once we can finally bring people back to the library.
Yeah. And, and again, like I said, with regard to the other stuff, like, I, I am a hundred percent positive, these are things that are already happening. But to that same end, it would be good to reflect them, you know, in, in writing so that when they do happen, we can say, hey, we actually did that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Very good. Any other questions or feedback? Our action item tonight as a board is to approve the operational plan for 2021, for calendar year 2021. But certainly, we have plenty of time for additional discussion or conversation around that before we take a vote. Okay, hearing none, then I will ask for a motion to go ahead and approve the operational plan as it appears in your packet.
I'll move.
Okay, do I hear a second?
A second.
Perfect, thanks. Just a reminder to everybody, we got to do it all audibly because people are, you know, listening sometimes by phone and they can't see us raise our hand. So that's why we do roll call votes and why sometimes I'll look at you like, waiting for you to say it. So just, just a reminder because of our Zoom format, we've got to do it that way. All right. So motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we will go ahead and proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews.
Hi.
Trustee Capel. Trustee Cervantes.
Hi.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Hi.
And an I vote for me as well. So that's approved. And again, thank you so much to Nikki and all the departments for putting together such a comprehensive and I think really ambitious plan. This is going to be, this is going to be a great year. All right, that brings us to our next item, which is an informational item. So really just a review of the annual report that you see on pages fifty six to sixty seven of your packet. Nikki, do you want to talk about this a little bit?
Sure.
Thank you.
So it's been, I'm not exactly sure the last time an annual report was done. So Chloe and I talked it out and decided to focus on the last two fiscal years to kind of give a snapshot to the board as well as the community, what's going on. So as you can see from looking through, we have the director's message as well as a spotlight on the strategic planning process that took place. And then highlights of the year, which, you know, Chloe worked with each manager or department and actually had to do some research to go and look, because we've had quite a few new managers since July twenty eighteen, which is when this, the annual report started. And just highlighted some of those big things for the past two years. Looking at the numbers, again, statistically as well as financially, things are a little wonky depending on with COVID and then with the finances in twenty eighteen and nineteen with a large amount of money, as you're all aware, spent on legal fees, it really changed our net position that year. But then we, we gained a lot back in the following fiscal year. So overall, could be worse. And then, of course, want to recognize the Friends and the Foundation and all the people that continue to support the Altadena Library District. And then, of course, looking ahead, all that we're hoping to accomplish through our operational plan next year. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I would, again, like to give kudos. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I would, again, like to give kudos to Chloe for putting together such a beautiful annual report for us. And she pretty much did most of the work compiling it. So that's, that's a summary.
Right. And as just somebody who works a lot in nonprofit world, I will say, yeah, standing ovation, bravo. It's a ton of work. And fantastic job. Any comments or questions on the annual report for Nikki? Okay. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Jason.
No, I'll just say, I'm, I think it's frankly perfect timing, Nikki, to look at the last two years. I think for for anybody from the outside to to take an objective view of where we were two years ago, you know, the December board meeting of 2018 compared to where we are now is is just an amazing amount of change. And, you know, there's too many people to recognize and thank for that. So I would just encourage, you know, anybody who maybe gets to this point in the YouTube video after tonight, to really spend some time taking a look at that and you know, see where we've, where we've made it to. And again, if we keep on this current trajectory, you know, two years from now, it's going to be some amazing things going on.
And I would just add that I think it's a terrific format. You have to love the graphics and the layout. I think I would advise you to try to find a format for, you know, your numbers, your revenues and expenses and so on, and other things that you want to try to report, sort of stick to that. One thing I noticed when I went back, when I first got on the board and looked at the annual reports, which were sporadic, they went, that went back, that everything was formatted differently. So if you wanted to find any kind of continuum and what a number, one number or another, sometimes they weren't even there the second time, or they were formatted differently, and you really had to spend a lot of time trying to put together. And I don't know if the general public is going to be doing that with a series of reports, but you know, it is something that in the future, people looking would have an easier time figuring out what the trends were and so on. Some of the big numbers you're using about visitors to the libraries and library cars and stuff, I think that that's really important, the sort of the lifeblood of what we're doing. So just, you know, a way to make it sort of a standardized format going forward would be great.
Yeah, totally. And I mean, moving forward, we will do it annually. So we won't have to try to cram two years worth of information into one, you know, 12-page report. But I, to your point, I agree that we should stick with it looking consistent year over year.
Okay. And Granny's not here because we're, we're on Zoom, but just on her behalf, I'll say, join the Friends, join the Friends.
Excellent point.
Which also we should all do. I didn't see my name on the Friends. Listen, I definitely joined the Friends, but I'm gonna send him another check. Gotta get that done. All right. So thank you so much. Again, beautiful job on that and exciting to see, even in a pandemic year, such positive statistics. All right, we've got some resolutions to do. So just as a quick preface to what we're doing tonight, and then we'll get into items C and D. So basically, this is the conclusion of the CFD formation process. So really, what we're doing tonight is the sort of closed parentheses that we opened back in August of this past year. So basically, at that point, we said, it's our intention to form a CFD and incur bonded indebtedness. And we're going to do all these things, you know, if approved by voters. And then what we're doing tonight is basically saying, it was approved by voters, that's still what we intend to do. The end. So there's no, I guess there's no real like special tax effect from tonight, what we're basically just doing with these resolutions and ordinances, saying we're reporting out what the actual vote totals were, and then we're authorizing the CFD to do what the CFD does. But that, that's really all it is tonight. And I appreciate that that's not maybe immediately apparent, but we can get into each of those in turn. So let's start with resolution number 2020-12. This is the declaration of the results of a special election for the Community Facilities District. So basically, what this resolution says is the vote totals came out how they did, as reported by the registrar, and we are we are basically saying we receive and approve that certificate of official results. So any questions about this resolution? It's pretty straight ahead. If you went in and looked at the math as Nikki and I did, and then had immediately a heart attack, because you realized some of the numbers didn't add up or didn't look right, some of those are results of total ballots cast, not necessarily votes on Measure Z particularly. So frequently, people will vote, but not vote on every item. So that's why the numbers are sort of out of whack on some of them. But certainly, no question about passage. So, yeah, basically, what we're gonna do is ask for a motion to go ahead and adopt resolution number 2020-12 as it appears in your package.
Katie, I do have a somewhat random question.
Okay, I love a random question. Go for it.
Is it possible to get any kind of official copy of the certification?
Oh, that's a good question. I'm sure it is. I'm sure, like all things with the LA County Registrar, if you pay them money, they will be happy to print you a copy. I actually don't know, Natalia, do you know if we can get, like, do we get one? Like, did we get a fancy one in the mail? Or we just get an electronic one?
No, they mailed us one, and of course, it came in right after we published.
Perfect.
We have the physical copy of what's in the package. So if you want a copy, we can definitely get you one.
Okay, I was just wondering.
Yeah, it came in just like we would expect from the county right after we needed it.
Consistency. All right. Any other questions or any other discussion on this? If not, then I will ask for a motion to go ahead and approve the resolution as it appears.
I motion that we approve the resolution as it appears.
Okay, perfect. Do I hear a second?
A second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded to adopt resolution 2020-12. Any further debate or discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews. Oh, I gotta have you unmute and say it out loud, Terry.
I'm sorry. I vote aye.
Thank you. Trustee Capel.
Aye.
Trustee Cervantes.
Aye.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Aye.
And that's an aye vote for me as well. So thank you so much. All right, now we come to item 9D. We do have a public comment on this item. So this is the second half of a public comment from Kim Kenny, so I'm going to read that into the record at this time. Her comment is regarding item 9D, question on the levying of the special tax. Is this item actually levying the tax? If not, when will that happen? What is the timeline to the decision of how much tax to levy? Thank you. Awesome question. Definitely gonna start with that. So, yeah, this is not levying a tax. This is authorizing. This is the Board of Trustees, which is the legislative body for the CFD, saying that such a tax can be levied at some point in the future. So this just basically is empowering the CFD to do that when it needs to happen. And I'm delighted that Mike is here with us, just in case I say something totally off base, which I don't think has happened yet, but he'll let me know if I do. Okay, great. So, yeah, so this ordinance, and again, an ordinance is a little bit different from a resolution, so this is something with more force. An ordinance is just empowering the CFD to levy a special tax at some point in the future. So we can talk a little bit about when that will happen and what that timeline is. And I think just, you know, that's separate from the discussion of this particular ordinance, but to give a little bit of context, I think it would be helpful to talk a little bit about what that looks like. And, you know, we'll get into this more as as time goes on. But basically, you know, just to answer Kim's question specifically, like, when will that happen? Well, no special tax will be levied until we know what the amount of bonded indebtedness would be. So recall that until 2025, there is no services component levied in the special tax by the CFD, because Measure A, our parcel tax, continues to exist until it sunsets. So the only piece of Measure Z, basically, but now the Community Facilities District special tax that would be levied would be a levy sufficient to meet any bonded indebtedness we incurred. So basically, to pay for bonds that we sold, right? We won't sell any bonds till we know what we got to pay for. And we won't know what we got to pay for till we look at our full list of projects. So it's, it's a whole cycle of things. I mean, we can kind of, and Mike, I'm going to ask you to jump in here in a minute. We can talk a little bit about what rough timelines might be. But this is the sort of conclusion of the formation process and the very, very beginning of the actual CFD existing in real time. And so there are a lot of hoops to jump through and a lot of stuff to be done before we get close to, you know, actually levying a special tax. Mike, is that more or less?
Yes, that's, you're right on the money there, Trustee Clark. One of the things that I mentioned in our discussion with staff, which you participated in, was the fact that the next step is going to be for the board to have a workshop and decide the priority projects. So that will kind of start the ball rolling. And then, as you mentioned, then it's a matter of talking to your architects, engineers, and so forth, and getting a construction drawdown schedule. And that would allow us to start the process of the issuance of debt. And the the levy would be placed on the tax roll in the July-August timeframe, which would be after we issued the debt and we know, you know, what the debt service is going to be for the 21, excuse me, the 2021 bond.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. And I think, you know, again, not really specific to this question tonight, but there is a lot of planning and preparation work to be done around the CFD, not just in terms of a project list, but, you know, we're gonna have to bid out all the vendors and consultants that are going to work with us. We're gonna have to go through that RFP process, like, all of those things are gonna have to happen. And we're gonna make sure we do, we do that right every step of the way. So I think the short answer is, is this levying the tax? No. When will that happen? I would say, you know, probably the very earliest would be late, late summer of this coming year. And we'll, you know, we'll know more as we, as we proceed down that path. But any other questions? And I'm delighted that we have Mike here, in case anybody has anything. But again, I do want to stay close to our agendized business, which is just this ordinance authorizing the levy of the tax at some point in the future. So if there are questions related to that, great. If there are questions more broadly, those are some of the things we're going to talk about at our board retreat as well. Okay. All right. Well, then, if there are no further questions at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2020-01, authorizing the levy of a special tax in a Community Facilities District.
I will move that we adopt ordinance 202001, authorizing that special tax.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a second?
A second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further question, debate, discussion on this item? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Capel.
Aye.
Trustee Cervantes.
Aye.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Aye.
And an aye vote for me as well. So that is approved. So thank you so much for, for that. That brings us to item 10, which is our annual governance piece. So we're going to do a couple of things in this section. We're going to elect board officers, first of all. And as per the education code, the Altadena Library District Board of Trustees has two officers, President and the Secretary. Those are set out for us by our establishing act, so that's what we do. After we elect our officers for the coming calendar year, then we will appoint some committees, some liaisons, and talk briefly about the board orientation and retreat. So that being the case, let's move directly into item 10A, the election of officers. So I will open the floor at this point for nominations for the presidency for the calendar year 2021.
No volunteers, huh?
Jumping right in there, huh? So Katie, is the idea, you would, you know, nominate somebody?
That's exactly right. Yeah. So for both of these positions, we'll need a nomination. We can have as many nominations as you want. You can nominate yourself. It's totally legit. And then, depending on how many nominations we have, then we'll take a vote, just like we do when we appoint, you know, a board vacancy, and we'll continue until one candidate for an office has a majority of votes.
Well, I've got a question about our policies and procedures for the board. And if you read the item about election of officers under that, to read is that it should change every year, that it's a one-year term. And the end window there seemed to me that it would be a different person every year. So what's your take on that?
It's a great question. I've got my, I've got my bylaws up for just this reason. So it doesn't actually say that it has to be a different person every year. It just says that the positions have to be elected every year. So if you look at, and actually, if I can, can I show my screen, Natalia?
Yes, no more.
Okay, thank you so much. I think this is helpful. It's a helpful moment to talk about how this all works. All right, so here we are into officers. So we elect at the first regular meeting, which is this one, and the officers remain in office for a term of one year or until successors are duly elected. There's no language in the board policies that says you can't, there are no term limits functionally in in the board policies as they stand. So, yeah, there's no, there's no restriction. The only restriction is you can't hold multiple offices. So you couldn't have one person be the chair and the secretary, or president and the secretary. And, you know, any vacancy gets filled at the next regular meeting for the remainder of the calendar year. But that's, that's really about all there is. The duties are spelled out in section 3.3, so there's a little bit about what the president does and what the secretary does. But yeah, that's a good question. No, it's not, it's not term limited, and there's no explicit language about having to have a new person hold the office year over year.
Well, you're currently the president, right?
True, true story.
And can we just go ahead? I mean, you're doing a great job. Can I nominate you to?
You can, yeah, you can. You certainly can. That's, that's, yeah, absolutely.
I will do that. I'll nominate you to continue. I think you're doing a good job. I mean, I'm the semi-new kid on the block, since Rushmore is the new kid on the block, but looks good to me. Unless you're not interested in doing it continuing.
No, I mean, I appreciate it. I, you know, I think this year has certainly been an unusual one. And usually, the the board presidency has sort of laundry list of various things that one anticipates. But, you know, I'm very grateful that we have such a good staff and that I've been able to work so closely with Nikki, because there certainly have been a lot of decisions that I didn't anticipate coming my way around closures and sending people home and all that. But, you know, I think, I think we've managed to to get through it pretty well. I'm happy to serve again. I will say that, you know, I think in the long run, and I think I've said this to each of you at various points, but I do think it would be helpful to have some broader conversations about governance, about roles, about responsibilities, and sort of how all that works. And I'd, I'd love to use some of our time at the board retreat to think about that. Not least because I think that we have a really dynamic and interested group of folks on this board, and I'd love to figure out sort of what we, what we all envision that process looking like going forward. So in the meantime, I'm, you know, in the meantime, I'm, you know, I'm delighted to accept your nomination, but the floor is also open if anybody else has a burning desire to serve as president. You know, happy to support that as well.
Well, I too would cast a vote, or either that or second the motion for Trustee Clark to serve as president.
Thank you. Any other nominations?
Are we allowed to ask if there's anyone else interested?
Sure, go for it.
Jason, or Terry, or Rushmore? Are you interested in that position?
I've already served. I'll give you my perspective. So sometime in the future perhaps, but not now. My feeling about the three of us, Katie and Jason and I, is that we all kinda got involved at the same time and I I think that the part of the reason that we did would be to be put in a leadership position, you know, in where our time came, so that we could get that experience. And I had the experience once already. So, you know, part of me leans toward Jason, just from the, the timing part of it, and for the opportunity that's involved in that, I think he'd be a good president as well. But Kate, you've done such a terrific job this last year that, you know, you have to kind of temper it with that as well. But I guess I'd come right out and ask Jason if he's, if I can do that, if he'd be interested in, in running as well.
Of course you can.
Yeah, I'd like to know, too.
Yeah, I guess where I stand is I'm not sure I have enough time to put into it what I'd want to put into it in that role. I think especially with all the work coming up around the facilities and Measure Z, that's where I would prefer to put my time and energy over the next year, because it's gonna be a huge, huge lift for all of us. And I'd like to just be putting as much time as I have into those efforts in any way that I can.
Okay, I'm really glad I asked that question there, because it's been important to me to make sure that, you know, folks are getting the experience they want out of this volunteer position, which has turned out to be much bigger than any others thought it would be. So, all right, good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for asking and answering.
All right. Yeah, and I'll just, I'll just say before we like, take a vote and move on. I totally agree with you, Terry, and I think that there's huge value in, you know, having people serve in, in various leadership positions. And certainly, I think one of my hopes is that we can start to develop some of those systems over the course of this next year, so that we're having a a very different conversation this time next year. I think that would be, that would be good for the organization. It'd be good for all of us. So, yeah, I'm ha, I'm happy to do it one more round, but I think, I think it would also be good to have an eye towards, you know, making sure that everybody feels like there's a, there's a process whereby that, that continues to move forward. Because I think it's good to have different, different perspectives. It brings something, brings something positive. But that being said, for the moment, there's one nomination on the floor, and that's me. So we will go ahead and take a vote on that. So when I call your name, just go ahead and I guess, vote, yea, your name. So we'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews.
Yay.
Trustee Capel.
Yay.
Trustee Cervantes.
Yay.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Yay.
And I don't know if it's in bad taste to vote for yourself, but I'll do it anyway, because I care about the library and I'm willing to step up again. So yay, for me.
Never, ever a bad taste to vote for yourself.
I don't think so. I think that's the patri.
Oh, yay in general, Katie. You did a great job this year.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. It's been a, it's been a really special opportunity to, to be in this role, and I I look forward to all the, all the great things to come in the following year. All right, we've got one more office to fill, which is the Office of Secretary. As you'll recall from the board policies, the secretary basically doesn't really do a lot of the mediting, because that is handled by our phenomenal staff. But the secretary does basically chair in the absence of the president, signs a whole bunch of resolutions. Presently, our Board Secretary is Jason. And so at this time, I will open the floor for nominations for the Office of Board Secretary.
Terry, haven't you taken this one as well in the past?
The secretary?
Yeah.
I, I think I was a secretary at the very beginning for, I, I don't remember. How can I possibly say that? Well, I don't think I was, actually. So, but I, I'm in favor of letting someone else, or it could be you two, Jason, get their feet wet in that sort of entry-level position into the governance of the board. So that'd be my way of saying I'm really not interested in that.
Jason, would you like to do it again?
I mean, it's not, I'll, I'll do it if neither Camila or Rushmore want it. I, I agree with Terry, you know. I mean, what you're really doing is, is really just taking a look at the official paperwork when it needs to be signed and making time to go in there and sign it. Katie hasn't missed any meetings yet this year, so I haven't had to fill in as, as board president, but I'm sure that could happen at some point in the future.
Oh, they're right.
I mean, I know that you all hit the ground running when you started on the board, but I personally don't feel up to taking on that type of leadership role. Not yet.
Rushmore?
Oh, well, no, I mean, I could do it. I mean, but, you know, I probably would wanna get one year under my belt, at least to get the lay of the land. It seems like you've done a good job so far, Jason. If you're willing to do it, I, I support you. If you really couldn't do it, I would do it.
Do I hear, do I hear a nomination?
Ja, Jason, it's up to you. You're up to it.
Jason, do the secretary.
So is that yes, Jason?
I nominated myself.
Nominated himself, which is cool. I like that. All right. Any other?
I'll second, I'll second that.
There we go. All right. It's happening. We've got momentum. All right. Do I hear any other nominations for the role of Board Secretary?
This is almost as exciting as watching the Electoral College today.
It's pretty wild. Doing democracy. All right. So hearing none, let's go ahead and proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Capel.
Aye.
Trustee Cervantes, I keep wanting to say. Trustee Wilkerson.
Aye.
And an aye vote for me as well. Bravo. Here we go again. We got it.
It's a testament to you two as a team. You've got a terrific job. And we've got a big year ahead of us, so.
This is true. This is true. All right. So that brings us to items. I wanna kind of think about items B and C together. And so at this point, I'd like to go ahead and share my screen, because I do have sort of some of this laid out, and I think it may be helpful to see it visually and think about like what the spots are and have a little bit of a conversation about it. So as you'll remember, we've got three liaison positions, and then we've got various, various committees. So just as a quick overview, we currently have one standing committee, which is our budget committee, and that will persist. We have two other ad hoc committees, the Public Funding Committee and the CVRA Committee, both of which dissolve. And so this is my sort of estimation of the committees I think that we're going to need for the coming year. But I, I wanna have a discussion around that. This is hopefully a, a good starting point to do that. So we'll need to appoint two members to each of these. So the Budget Committee, obviously, will continue as a standing committee. I think, given the amount of work and procedural procedural savvy that's gonna be required for the CFD, even just relative to the levying of the special tax, that there's a lot of value in establishing a Community Facilities District Committee as a standing committee. That means, just as a reminder, that of course, it's public meetings, it's noticed, it's Brown Act compliant. And in its current iteration, we envision, you know, two trustee members, but certainly a Community Facilities District Committee could also include as full-voting members, members of the public, which I think is something to, to think about. I think there could be a lot of merit in that as well. We did something similar with the Strategic Planning Committee. So the idea is that we would appoint two people to the Budget Committee, we would appoint two people to the Community Facilities, or Community Facilities District Committee. I think that we will need to reform an ad hoc committee around redistricting. So formerly, it was basically the scope of work for the CVRA Committee was, like, do we want to do the process of redistricting? Having voted yes and retained a demographer and all of that. We're now in the process of what does that actually look like? There are a number of legal requirements and public hearings and so on, that I think, you know, would be, it would be helpful to have a committee paying attention to that. And then, finally, last but certainly not least, a new incarnation of the Facilities Committee, working, of course, alongside staff and probably some of our, our third-party consultants and vendors as well. So, you know, the Budget Committee, the CFD Committee, probably both standing committees. Redistricting, I think, works probably as an ad hoc committee. That means it doesn't have to be Brown Act compliant, although it certainly can be, and some of the public hearings have to be. And the Facilities Committee, you know, could be ad hoc. Special just means, basically, a Brown Act compliant committee that exists for not ever and ever and ever into the future, but for a specific length of time. Which could be, you know, who knows, 30 years? I don't know. But it's a, it's a time-limited, it's a time-limited thing. So that's sort of the, that's sort of the lay of the land as, as I see it, but I would, I would love to hear your guys' feedback first on just the structure of those four, how you feel about that. And if we've got other ones we wanna consider or include, we can certainly talk about that as well.
Katie, I just, I guess there's the point of clarification. Cause like, my understanding of ad hoc committees, and I'm thinking specifically about how to handle the Facilities Committee, is they, they are like time-specific, but also understand, you know, this is the committee that's gonna really be doing a lot of, along with the CFD, a lot of the foundational work around Measure Z going forward. And in my view, like, that's a bare minimum five years. Theoretically, as many as 30, because of just the bonds, but I'm just trying to figure out, like, I think one option would be if we have it just for a year, and then when we come back together next December, depending on where everything's at, we either need to reconstitute it with a new chair and a new member, or so, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And I think, you know, again, like, yes, it's true that ad hoc committees have a lifespan of a year, but there's no reason you can't reconstitute exactly the same committee with the same scope and even the same membership for another year. It, it's just a procedural action that has to happen, but it's also an executive one. So the board, you know, the board chair basically says, and we're gonna reform the Facilities Committee, and you're still gonna be the chair, and it's still gonna have this person on it, and that's what's gonna happen. Models off, like, it, yeah.
Cause I also envision that the Facilities Ad hoc Committee, like, a standing agenda item for the CFD would be a report back from the Ad hoc Committee. Right? Just thinking ahead, like, seems like that make, would make perfect sense.
Sure, yeah.
Would as well.
Yeah, that's right.
And that would be an agendized public.
Yeah, absolutely. And all of these committees will report, of course, you know, publicly at every regular board meeting as well. So, absolutely. But I think, yeah, obviously, there is going to be substantial overlap between the CFD Committee and the Facilities Committee. I think there's probably gonna be a fair amount of overlap between probably the Budget Committee and the Facilities Committee as well, just in the, in the reality of what that process is gonna look like and how it works. But, oh, sorry, go ahead, Terry, yeah.
Well, is this that they, the Budget Committee, the CFD Committee, and the Facilities Committee are really tied, that they have in so many ways. So, you know, yeah, I think you need to keep them apart, I suppose, but you might have to at least review them every year and find out if they need to change, or, you know, they're
Yeah, that's, that's right. And again, like, I think that we can, you know, we can start here, and if we need to adjust, or reform, or reimagine any of these things as we go along, I mean, we can certainly do that as well. So I, I think that there's a lot of scope for flexibility, you know, throughout the course of the year. It's not sort of a, we do it now and we're locked into it forever. The, the one-year thing is just, like, they automatically dissolve at the end of the year. But we can, we can adjust at any time. That's, that's totally possible.
It sounds like it'll be a year before, you know, bond sales and revenue raising from the CFD you know, function that we have. It will take a while for that money to even hit into our regular budget, probably a year or so, right?
Yeah, at the, at the, at the, at the very most accelerated.
So the Budget Committee, it could sort of retain its form right now. To take, you know, help advise on the budget, and they can look at it and review it, and monitor it, readjust it, et cetera. Because maybe the big changes won't come for another year or so.
That's right. That's right. Yeah, that's exactly right. And, you know, just like with, I mean, with the existing revenue sources, once the, once the money exists from, you know, technically from the, from the sale of bonds, because the levying of the special tax, we're almost like a pass-through, like, we levy the special tax to pay the debt service on the bonds. We don't get the special tax money. We get the bond money upfront, and then we pay the special tax over the course of time to pay back the bonded indebtedness we've incurred. So, you know, I think the Community Facilities District Committee will be involved a lot in thinking about how some of that finance controlling and structure and, you know, tracking would, would work best. And I think that there's a lot of room for those conversations. Again, you know, we'll, we'll bid out opportunities to have experts assist us as well. But I think, you know, I think you're right, that there's gonna be a lot of overlap between those.
From the CFD will, will flow through our P and L, basically.
I think, I think so, yeah.
So for, I'd like, so Rushmore or Camila, do you guys have any thoughts or insight, just kind of from the outside looking in, since you're both relatively new? You know, just as far as structure or participation, or even just questions about interaction, or anything like that?
Question that I really have is on the Facilities Committee, what, what the exact role is. I mean, Nikki and her team, you know, they, they look to address the, the maintenance and upgrade to the facilities that works hand-in-hand with the budget to inform budget requests. The purpose of a board member being, having this committee, I'm not quite sure. Maybe that would help me understand as to, you know, what the role is of, of the, of the board members having this committee, working with Nikki and her team.
I can say what I think it will be, and in my opinion, what it should be.
Go for it.
Yeah.
What it was last year is we formed the committee to really take on the responsibility of handling, once we did the RFP and got, and hired a firm to handle putting together the initial planning and, and costs estimates and whatnot, for all of the facilities work leading into Measure Z. It was the Facilities Ad hoc Committee that took on that work. It was the Facilities Ad hoc Committee that took on that work, working with ARG, to help kind of create that plan that was the foundation of Measure Z. Terry and I, we, you know, we did a lot of work in meetings with ARG, and Nikki, and Jonathan, and others. But also putting together and facilitating the community meetings that were part of that. So that's what the committee did previously. What I would envision the committee doing going forward is kind of the next step. So setting the, actually implementing the priorities and the phases, phases that were identified in the plan ARG put together. Making recommendations to the CFD Committee. And just, you know, all of the work around that. So I'm assuming that we will want to do additional community meetings. Making sure that the different pieces of that plan still make sense. Are there any changes that need to be made? You know, all of that kind of work that's going to be necessary. I would also envision that committee taking on the role of, you know, we're going to need to, once we set the priorities, we're going to need to put out to bid for both official design work, but also contractor and build work. Whether or not that's the same firm is obviously an open question. So I see all of that kind of being driven through the Facilities Committee.
Right. Oh, I appreciate the clarity, and I can kind of sense the nuancing of it, as it was previously to where we are now, post-passage of Z. And why you, you would venture to say that it really may not necessarily be advisable that, or maybe it doesn't necessarily need to be an ad hoc meeting, but maybe a, a standing committee. It could be an ad hoc committee and just, you know, as, as President Clark has indicated, it can, it can go on in perpetuity for, for, you know, on a year-to-year renewal basis, but obviously, the Facility Committee will drive the Budget Committee decisions as well as the FCD Committee. So I mean, if it's a matter of just calling it ad hoc versus a, a standing committee, I'm open either way, but obviously, it's going to be, have, play a significant, significant role, and it should be, I think it's distinctly different from the CFD and the Budget Committee, but I think those, those, obviously, those three will be working hand-in-hand for, for the foreseeable future.
Go ahead, Camila, sorry.
Well, I, I don't have much to say, that, other than I'm intrigued personally by the redistricting committee, so I would be more than happy to serve there, in addition to, you know, wherever else I'm, I'm needed.
Terrific. Sorry, Terry, you had something.
Well, just the Facilities Committee did serve as sort of the face of library improvements and expansion with the meetings that we have, as modestly attended as they were. People were generally aware of where we were going, and we got feedback about what the community would like. And I would think that you'd need something like that going forward, because it's one thing to have a a committee that's proposing changes to the library when you have no money. But now we have enough money to actually deliver on those promises. So I would think the community would be a lot more involved in some of the decisions about what are hap, what's happening. So that might be a continuation of the way the Facilities Committee dealt with the library, with the district, the people in the district. That might be, you know.
Yeah, certainly. I mean, I think also, if you, you know, sort of refer back to the, the operational plan that we looked at earlier, that's a, that's a strong component of, you know, part of the, part of the, the staff operational side of all of this as well, is making sure that, you know, there are community conversations that are happening. I think for the committee work, you know, to kind of return to the, the question earlier of like, well, if staff is doing stuff, and we've got, you know, third-party vendors doing stuff, what is really the role of, of the committee? And I think it's, it's twofold. So part of it is oversight, you know, and doing some of the oversight work that is the function of the board without the necessity of convening the entire board, or using all of our regular meeting time, which is, you know, as we say here, at eight o'clock in our, in our regular meeting. Like, it would be totally unsustainable to try to do all of this work as a committee of the whole. So, you know, delegating some of that oversight work to a committee, so that decisions can be made by that committee, and recommendations can be made to the full board to approve without, you know, going through all those, all of those decision points and steps every single time as a group. And so, so, yeah, so part of it is oversight, but then part of it, I think, is the unique ambassadorial and sort of public-facing role of the board, right? As elected representatives having, you know, a public-facing part in this process, that making sure that, you know, if people have concerns or questions, that they know, oh, hey, you know, trustee, whoever is on this committee, so I can, I can go to a meeting of that committee and voice my opinion, or I can, you know, participate or attend, or make sure I'm, I'm in the loop on, on redistricting, or in the loop on the levy of the special tax, or, or whatever it is. So I think it's, you know, it's also just making really open, public, and transparent those processes, because they are going to be, they're going to be new. They're going to be new for us as a board, they're going to be new for us as a community. And so, part of the board responsibility, in addition to oversight, is just really advocating for that, that open and transparent piece, which I know we all really care about, and, and making sure that that continues to happen.
The, the thing is also, we can always adjust or amend.
Totally.
But of course, the year, so if we feel
Totally right.
That we really need to create a permanent committee because of this, the sheer volume of, of meetings and/or the public interest to be part of the conversation, then that can always be adjusted at a later point.
That's exactly, that's exactly right. And as some of our legal counsel are fond of saying, we'll remember that, you know, the Brown Act is a, is a floor, not a ceiling. So we can always do more. We can always, you know, conduct more public meetings, we can always have more transparency, more engagement than we're required to by law, but, you know, sort of as a, as a starting point, this is, this is what we're looking at. So you know, I, if, if this, if this system more or less works for everybody, I'd like to suggest chairs for each of these committees. And then fill in, fill in the membership as well. So I would recommend that we retain the Facilities Committee as an ad hoc committee, just because of the many conversations that are going to need to happen over the course of the next year. And maybe one of the recommendations at the end of the year is that actually it needs to convert into a standing committee. And, you know, and fine, but I, I think that it might be, it might be more effective, given that we do have a public-facing CFD Committee, to sort of satisfy the, the needs of transparency. Is everybody more or less okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we'll call that, we'll call that an ad hoc committee. All right. Oops. Fail. All right. So then, in order, I'd like to suggest a couple of chairs, and again, this is, you know, technically according to the, the bylaws, a, a function of the function of the president, but I'd like to, I'd like to make it a process of consensus. So as Chair of the Facilities Committee, Jason, I'd, I'd ask that you, you serve in that role, if you're willing.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And as Chair of the Community Facilities District Committee, Terry, I'd ask that you serve in that capacity. Okay. We're going to put these all down, and then we can move them around if we need to, but I think let's just, let's just try to get some of these on paper. So for the redistricting committee, Camila, I know you expressed interest in serving on it. Would you like to chair it, or would you prefer to be a constituent member? Either one is totally fine. Oops.
Yes. I would prefer to be a member, if needed, I can chair it.
Okay.
Can I propose a friendly amendment of sorts?
Yeah, yeah. This is just sort of discussion process, so we don't even have to Yeah, go for it.
I've just got like Terry's earlier comments, just in the back of my head, about giving folks opportunities. And, you know, that, that one is going to be a bit of a lift. So what I would ask us to think about doing, because Katie's obviously done a ton of work on that, I think, in some of these, having that kind of consistency is critical. But I'm also thinking, Terry, so I, I would ask all of us to think about Camila chairing it, but Katie being the member. So there's, there's an opportunity there for leadership, but also continuity as far as like background and history and information and such.
And coaching and support.
A hundred percent, a hundred percent. Yeah, 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 absolutely. No, I'm, I'm happy to, I'm happy to help.
Your recommendation.
All right.
You're next, Rushmore.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's happening right there. So, Camila, we'll put you in as chair, and I will, I will absolutely help. And then for Chair of the Budget Committee, so I, you know, traditionally, the president has served on the Budget Committee. I'm not convinced that that has to continue. That's sort of a norm. It's not necessarily, I mean, it's not a rule. You know, one thing that Terry, who's been our Chair of the Budget Committee, pointed out at our last meeting, which I thought was, was well said, is that actually, the, the process is pretty, pretty functional. Like, it's, it's moving pretty well. It's, it's not hugely complex. So yeah, I mean, I'm happy to continue on the Budget Committee, but Rushmore, I wonder if you would be, if you'd be willing to chair the Budget Committee?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. That's great. So that puts, that puts, not myself, but, and that is fine, is desirable, puts everybody else in a chair position for each committee, and I, I think that's, that's really important. So in terms of membership, so I, like I said, I'm happy to, happy to sit in on, on the redistricting committee. In terms of the Budget Committee, Camila, I wonder if you would be willing to, to step up on that one?
Or?
Okay.
Am I on mute? Yes, okay.
You're good. All right. And then we need another member on the CFD Committee, and another member on the Facilities Committee. And I will just also reiterate for the record that on all of these, any board member is more than welcome to attend any of these meetings. It's just that if we have more than two people, the third person has to, like, not say anything or participate, because then it would be a, a quorum of the legislative body. So, like, if you're not on the Community Facilities District Committee, but you want to know what's going on, you can totally go to those meetings and, and pay attention and be in the loop, but you may not be able to, you know, participate as a voting member in, in the process for reasons of, of Brown Act compliance. So any, any requests in terms of other seats? Rushmore, go ahead.
I, I wouldn't mind serving as a member for the CFD.
Okay. Got it? And yeah, I mean, I, I would be pretty interested at, at, at being a member on the Facilities Committee. I think that that would be really helpful to know kind of where those, where those pieces are moving. But I don't want to take a slot if somebody else really wants it, no?
Well, I mean, that's your interest. I mean, I think that we should, we need to have all the, the people with the most knowledge there, but I'll, I'll defer to you.
I'll, I'll do it for a minute, but if we, if we need to move it around, we can, we can move it around. How does everybody feel about that?
It works for me.
Yeah?
We're going to be talking about all these things together all the time anyway.
We sure are. It doesn't really make that much difference. Yeah, it's, you know, we're going to be all up in it all the time. So it's really more, I mean, I think the chairmanship of these, chairpersonship, I don't know. The Chair of each of these committees is important, because that's the person who, you know, does work more closely with Nikki and with staff in terms of scheduling meetings, setting the agenda for our public-facing, or for our Brown Act compliant committees. You know, making sure that the agenda's put together, that things are noticed. And, and again, these are, you know, sort of mini versions of the, of the board. The ad hoc committees are a little bit less, less serious in that sense, but they do certainly require the same level of, you know, of planning and follow-through and coordination. Okay. So if everybody's pretty good with that, I think we'll, we'll leave it there for now. Then that brings us to the appointment of our board liaisons for 2021. So recall that we have three liaison positions, a governmental relations liaison, who basically is tasked with keeping track of, of what's going on in the broader sphere of government, both in terms statewide, but, you know, also regionally and sort of locally. We have a liaison to each of our support groups, to the Friends, and to the Foundation. And so I would, I would ask for, you know, basically expressions of interest. Again, I can, I can just assign these, but I'd, I'd love to know kind of who's, who's interested in doing what, who feels like they have, they have a spot that they'd like to participate in, given the sort of committee assignments that we've got, and realizing that, like, nobody's time is infinite. Any requests?
I was actually hoping that Camila would be interested in being a liaison to the Friends.
I'm okay with that.
All right.
I've just completed that, Camila. I, I were changing now, and I can tell you, they're a great group to work with.
I can tell. I would definitely agree with that.
And I'm just thinking, Camila's, you know, some of the discussions and some of what you've shared with us as to, you know, what your motivation was to be on the board, and really thinking about our community engagement. And so that's just why I, I thought that'd be a good, a good fit.
No, I definitely agree. I'd support that.
Terrific. All right. Governmental relations. Does anybody have a suggestion, either of themselves or someone else?
Fill on that one.
Betsy, I know, Betsy did a great job. Betsy did a great job.
Yeah, I've only got one thing going, so.
Do you want to, you want to step up?
I could, I could tackle that one, yeah.
I love it. Fantastic. I'm sure, I'm sure if you ask her super nicely, Betsy will let you borrow some of her homework.
I would like if you, you know, got on the internet a lot and figured it out.
Yeah, I think, I think that's ninety percent it. Mm-hmm, that's right. And then we also need a liaison to the Foundation. Which until recent, Rushmore, you want to do it? Great.
Yeah, yeah. No one's jumping on that sword, I guess I will.
Bridgette can be tough, but she's good to work with.
That's right.
On second thought, then.
All right. All right, guys. So this is, this is what we're looking at in terms of roles for 2021, and, and with the proviso that, of course, we can always change our minds. You know, we can always move things around, or if, as we go through, and life happens, and certainly 2020 has taught us this, that who knows what next year's going to look like, but if we need to make adjustments, you know, we can, we can always do that. So with that being the case, is everybody feeling pretty okay with this, with this allocation?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Then that's what we will do. I will send everybody a copy of this, so you remember what, what you signed up for. All right. Thank you guys so much for that. So last little piece here, and this is just an information item, just a reminder that we're going to do our Board Orientation and Retreat on Friday, January 8th, from nine AM to one PM. And, you know, I think I've said this to each of you individually at this point, but basically, we're going to do a couple of things. We're going to think about some of our big moving pieces in terms of, you know, CFDs, and what that means, and like, what is a bond, and how does it work? And, you know, some sort of one-on-one stuff, so that we all come into January, and the remainder of the year, really feeling like we've got our arms around some of these moving pieces. So that'll be, that'll be part of it. We'll definitely do a review of some of our procedures and processes and, and Brown Act refreshers. But then the big, the big thing that I'd like to have everybody kind of put in their percolator between now and then is a larger discussion about basically governance, about the role is a larger discussion about basically governance, about the role of the board, like what is it that we all want to think about and commit to individually as a group? What are we looking at over the coming year? I mean, certainly you've seen the very comprehensive plan that is coming from staff, but, you know, we have a part in this as well. And, and what does that look like? So part of that is reflection, a look back, certainly for some of us that have, have been around long enough to, to look back. Um, and then thinking about what we'd like, you know, to, to imagine that looking like going forward. So some, some creativity, some, some opportunity for some big picture thinking and some big picture questions. And, uh, you know, certainly we will get you an agenda and some more specifics as we get a little bit closer, but that's, that's more or less the size of it. All right. As far as I'm aware, uh, in the packet this month, there's no correspondence. Um, so with that, I will ask for any future agenda items. We have, uh, plenty of stuff that will be coming our way. So no shortage of business to attend to, but if there's anything that you'd like to add to an agenda, you can do that now, or of course, you can always just let Nikki or myself know at any time and we'll do that.
I think obviously, uh, by the time we come into our January meeting, I don't know if there'll be much to report, but I think all of these committees should have met at least once by the time we get to the end of January, so report backs.
Yep, mhm, that's exactly right. So, well, possibly not the Budget Committee, but, um, yeah. Well, possibly, I don't know. I can't remember where we are in our mid-year process. But yeah, I think e- every, every one of these committees, um, you know, we would want to strive to have a report, even if it's, you know, this is sort of what our plan is, this is what we're thinking about in terms of our next steps. This is our schedule, this is our game plan. So I think, I think planning to come back to the January meeting with that well in hand would be, would be a good idea.
We're talking about the January board meeting, right?
January board meeting, yeah, not the retreat, that's right. Mm-hmm, that's exactly right. Sorry, Nikki, go ahead.
Yeah, and I'll just update, um, the trustees that you and I have talked through timeline moving forwards. Katie and I are looking at that. And I'm also looking at what RFPs need to come to the board in order to make sure CFD is moving forward, such as, you know, hiring the, the team of consultants that we're going to need. So like, that ball's already rolling. I'm working with the attorneys and staff to produce all of that. So because that, that is definitely next step. So I just thought I'd let the board know that that's what I'm working on right now.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, every, everybody's, everybody's worked through tonight. Um, you know, including Mike and Sarah and BB and Kay and, and everybody else, was the conclusion of our original CFD formation process. But now that that has ended, this is the point at which we need to, you know, go out to bid for some of those, for some of those ongoing relationships. So yep. All right, anything else? No? Okay, well, with that, uh, I will say congratulations to us for making it through a marathon meeting, for making it through 2020. And, uh, you know, I wish that, uh, I wish that we were in a situation where we could all get together at, uh, at a holiday party and celebrate, but, uh, absent that, I will just say, I wish you just the very happiest of holidays. And I'm looking forward to seeing everybody in the new year.
Thank you. Everyone else as well.
Happy holidays, guys.
Happy holidays.
Be well to your staff.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, my God, I didn't even ask for it. You're so on it. I love it. All right, any objection?
Always the new guy, you know?
I second.
All right, any objection? All right, hearing none, I declare us adjourned at eight twelve PM. Thanks so much, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.